A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise. Pastor Ryan Ackerman of the Cornerstone Church will give the invocation, and I ask that you remain standing after the invocation to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's open with a word of prayer. O great heavenly Father, we give you thanks. We thank you for blessing us with such a wonderful community in which to live. We thank you even this evening for giving us the opportunity to freely gather together to discuss the needs of our community. We thank you, O God, for how you have served us with so many faithful people. We thank you for our town leaders and officials. We thank you, Lord, for our educators, for our maintenance workers, for so many who give so fully of themselves to ensure that this is a wonderful community. And we come before you and we petition you for help tonight. We ask that you would give us clarity to see tonight's issues clearly, and we pray that you would give us discernment to make wise decisions for the good of all. We pray, asking all of these things, asking for your divine help in them, and we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ryan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I submit the following memorial resolution. Whereas the citizens of Manchester-by-the-Sea note with profound regret the deaths of several of their friends and neighbors during the past year, and seek to recognize and acknowledge their varied contributions to the town's commonwealth and welfare and our mutual sense of community, we citizens hereby salute the departed, acknowledge our common indebtedness to them, extend the sympathy of the town to their intimates and survivors, and declare that this resolution be entered in the town archives and a true copy be sent to the appropriate survivors. The person is memorialized and their achievements are proclaimed in the order of the dates of their deaths. Jens Kjøenssen, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Harbor Advisory Committee. Robert Giuliano, Parks and Recreation Committee. Thomas C. Andrews, firefighter, Council on Aging driver. Irene S. Andrews, school bus driver, school cafeteria worker. Mary Ann McGovern, Council on Aging. Judith Gamble, Friends of the Council on Aging. And Jeffrey Bodmer Turner, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, moves the resolution as read, and Becky Chakes, the Vice Chair, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The memorial resolution is unanimously adopted. I ask that all who can rise and observe a moment of silence in memory of these former Thank you. I'm going to omit many of the procedural comments I normally make in the interest of keeping the meeting as short as possible. I'll focus instead on those procedures that will be different tonight from our usual practice. I encourage all participants except those who are unable due to a medical condition to wear a mask throughout the meeting, except when recognized to speak. Please keep your mask on while leaving the meeting until you're outside. There are several stationary microphones around the room. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat. While approaching and leaving the mics, maintain at least three feet of separation from everyone else. If there's another voter already at the mic, wait at least three feet away from that person, and when the person leaves, wait for one of our volunteers to disinfect the microphone and adjust the height. When the volunteer steps away, then go to the mic. Please don't touch the microphone yourself. Wait to be recognized, then give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson. Speakers must limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. You should have picked up a pink card as you checked in. It identifies you as a voter. If the electronic voting system should fail and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure you're counted. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator, the heads of all town departments, Pamela Bowden, Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District, Avi Urbus, Business Manager of the School District, Michelle Randazzo, Town Council, and Robin Stein, also with KP Law. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if needed. It's unlawful to smoke on the school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. Meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who were serving as volunteers tonight. Register our voters Eileen Buckley, assisting her in checking in voters Michelle Bayer, Tom Keigho, Kurt Meldon, Elaine Persons, Joanna Shaw, Lee Simmons, Allison Anhold White, and Gretchen Wood, and serving as counters Ellen Flatley, Beth Heisey, Kathy Ryan, and Lee Simmons. Thank you all for serving the town. I extend special thanks to the Manchester Board of Health and especially Doctors Martin Hahn and Tanya Culpett. Martin and Tanya gave generously of their time and expertise to help prepare for this meeting and make sure that it's as safe as possible for all participants. The full board unanimously endorsed the public health protocol that I developed and published. Our approach was to err on the side of caution rather than take chances with health and safety. And last, but certainly not least, I want to recognize Eli Bowling, who is retiring as a selectman at the end of his current term. In my 27 years as moderator, never has the town or the board faced challenges comparable to those during his tenure. First the pandemic, and then the public negotiation with SLV. Through it all, Eli remained wise, respectful, and unflappable. Please join me in thanking him for his service. I now recognize Jeffrey Bodmer Turner, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Alan always gets worried when I start separating a lot of paper here.
I just wanted to tell you that separating the papers counts against your time.
I love working with you, Alan.
Feeling is mutual, Joe.
Good evening and welcome to our first annual town meeting in three years to be held indoors. Annual town meeting. Not only are we meeting indoors, but we come together for the first time in this beautiful new elementary school building, which will serve our children and families for many years to come. As a town, we've come a long way from the beginning of COVID-19. Over the past two years, 1 in 8 Manchester residents have been diagnosed with COVID compared to 1 in 4 nationally. Although we may feel like we are quote-unquote "out of the woods" or quote-unquote "dodged a bullet," there are still residents in our community who are very vulnerable to the consequences of contracting COVID-19. Many of those folks may be sitting in this room. We ask you all, out of respect for those residents, to follow the health protocol that Mr. Wilson has shared for tonight's meeting. The Board of Selectmen has focused on four major areas this past year: infrastructure, natural resources, supporting local businesses, and public safety dispatch. We have supported the continued efforts by the Department of Public Works to reduce groundwater, stormwater inflows into our wastewater treatment plant, which resulted in a decrease over the past five, six years of 140,000 gallons per day, 21% of the system's capacity due to their hard work, and we congratulate them for that. Last fall, the Board voted to reestablish the Water Resources Protection Task Force to review and update the 1990 Horstley Witten Drinking Water Protection Plan. The task force is up and running and working diligently under the guidance of Steve Gang and members of CONCON. They're working to identify a long-term plan of action with specific next steps for protecting our town water supply. This past year, the Board of Selectmen also collaborated with Friends of Manchester Trees to create a tree policy to protect our green infrastructure, establishing a rigorous review process before a town tree may be taken down. Throughout the pandemic, we've taken steps to support our local businesses. Beach access restrictions were eased last summer to draw non-residents to the town and increase local business activity. The Board supported the use of federal funds to create a direct path from the public parking area behind Town Hall to the village shopping area. The Town Administrator secured a licensing agreement for the public to cross the private parking area, which completed the pathway a decade after this idea was first proposed. Various town boards are involved in initiating a parking study now to propose innovations to increase activity to downtown businesses. The proposal to join the regional North Shore 911 Dispatch Center has been before the town for the past 18 months. Last summer and into the fall, the Board of Selectmen held three public forums to define the needed changes for dispatch, both operations and upgraded equipment. In October, the Board asked the regional center to complete a feasibility study outlining current services and regional service. On April 14th and May 5th of this year, we are holding two more public forums to dive deeply into the financial impacts of the changes needed to remain in-house or to move to the regional service. There is much information on the town website, including the feasibility study and the presentation utilized at the most recent public forum. There will be a town-wide advisory vote on this question on the upcoming May 17th ballot. The Board urges you to become fully informed about this important decision before you I want to thank you all for taking the time to come to tonight's town meeting, to discuss the various warrant articles and to consider the decisions we face as a town. Open town meetings are one of the oldest forms of legislative bodies in our country, predating the American Revolution and the United States Constitution. As such, we all have a responsibility to respect each other's opinions and to treat our differences and agreements with civility. We further hope you find time you are spending here tonight informative and productive. Before ending, I ask your indulgence for one more moment. I want you to try and think back to what you were doing in April of 2013. Now, that's before the pandemic, so you may be a little fuzzy on that. Maybe the winter of 2016, maybe that's not so much of a stress. How about March 2020? If you were Eli Bowling, you would have been running for a seat on the Board of Selectmen in 2013, contributing to the development of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan in 2016, and steering the town through the emergence of the COVID pandemic in 2020 as Chair of the Selectmen. Later in 2020, Eli led the Board of Selectmen into the contentious SLV 40B hearings, navigating the impact of this development on the town with a firm, steady hand. Eli Bowling is retiring this year after serving nine years on the BOS, four years as Chair. His contributions to the town have always been well-informed, very thoughtful, and immeasurably helpful. I've worked closely with Eli over the past three years on the Board. He has been a mentor to many of us and has guided the Board through some of the toughest problems the town has faced with calm and grace. As Board members, we all feel a deep sense of gratitude for his leadership, and we join the town to thank Eli from the bottom of our hearts for his service. Under other circumstances, I might suggest we lift a glass to Eli, but tonight, we will A quite comfortable chair with the town seal as a gift for his selfless service to our community.
Thank you, Jeff. That was well done. In general, the best way to follow the progress of the meeting is with the annual report of the Finance Committee. That's this pamphlet. It contains all the warrant articles and the recommendations of the Selectmen as well as those of the Finance Committee. There were copies in the packages delivered to every household, and I believe there were extras at the check-in station. There are also two handouts you should have received as you checked in. The first is a page containing the regional school committee's three motions under Article 6. Or six, yeah. And the second is a page prepared by the planning board on the zoning amendment proposed under Article 10. You should have both of those, particularly the three motions for the school committee because we're actually going to vote on those. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends. And while we're voting, a box in the upper right-hand corner of the screen behind me will also show the 15-second voting period as it counts down. Press 1 to vote yes, 2 to vote no, or 3 to abstain on the motion under consideration. And the Finance Committee pamphlet is correct in all respects except one, and that is that on the back, it tells you to press no keys if you want to abstain, and that's wrong. If you want to abstain, press 3. The pamphlet went to the printer before we decided exactly how we're going to use the keypads tonight. So if you want to abstain, press 3. If you change your mind, you can just press another button because the computer records only your last choice. And the voting period ends, the screen behind me will show the number of yes and no votes and abstentions, and also display the totals graphically. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner of the keypad should turn green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstaining. The device then goes back to sleep. We've checked the handsets thoroughly and tested them all, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. Jessica Mancini of Turning Technologies, the system vendor, is here this evening as well to make sure that everything is working properly. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting, or you experience any other problem, you can get another clicker. As I think many of you know, there was a discrepancy at the fall town meeting between the number of voters checked in and the total vote counts. So first, we're going to test all the handsets together to make sure that doesn't happen again. The town clerk tells me that we have...how many people checked in? We have 293 people checked in, so I would ask everyone to press 1, 2, or 3 on the handset now. Doesn't matter which one, but just be sure to press one key. Voting period is open, and you'll have 15 seconds. Well, okay. If it's any consolation, I'm not getting the right signal either. Okay. What we're gonna...we have a receiver in the laptop here that should be receiving everybody's votes, but it isn't. For whatever reason, maybe the room is too large or the signals aren't strong enough. That white box in the middle of the room on the stand there is a booster. We used this out on the football field in...last year for the annual town meeting, and it worked, so I'm...we're pretty confident it'll work in here. Okay. Voting period is open? Yes?
Yes, it's open.
Okay, voting period is open. So how many voters checked in? 293 checked in, and we got 287 votes in total. So my standard, as I'll say earlier, is going to be if we get 90% of those checked in on a single vote, we're going to consider that success because historically, not everyone votes on every article. There are always people who don't vote, in fact, on every article. So it appears the system is now working. We're going to keep a running tally of the people checked in throughout the meeting, and if on any single vote, the total votes counted cast look to be less than 90% of the total checked in, then we'll stop and perform another test just like that one of all the clickers together. That'll take extra time, so I encourage everyone to vote yes or no or to abstain on every article. That way, we won't have to repeat the test throughout the meeting. We'll conduct one more test vote to make sure everyone is comfortable with the systems. Question is, will the Boston Celtics win this series against the Brooklyn Nets? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Just a hint, they're up 3-0. Okay, Diane...the town clerk tells me we now have 300 voters, and it's overwhelmingly yes. And the total number cast is...somebody help me with the...
291.
291, so that's close enough. This voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. That means that any voter who wishes will be able to go to the town clerk's office and determine how his or her votes were recorded. I want to thank Resident Jim Starkey for writing the program that will enable the town clerk to retrieve that information. The town will not create a record linking voters' names with individual handsets, so all votes are secret. That means that if you want to check your voting record with the town clerk, you'll need to save the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset, following the words "device ID" next to the QR code. If you have a smartphone, just take a photo of the back of the clicker. And while we're on the subject of voting, town clerk Diane Buco has asked me to remind everyone that the annual town election will take place here on May 17th. The polls will open at 7:00 and close at 8:00 p.m., and we'll use the same entrance we did tonight. I look forward to seeing many of you again at the election. When the meeting ends, it will be important to maintain distancing and avoid creating bottlenecks at the exits. For this reason, I ask that you remain in your seats until Harbor Master Bayon Pike calls you row, and we'll start from the front of the room and exit through that door. Please remember to return your handset to one of the bins in the hall as you leave, and there are recycling containers for water bottles and discarded papers. Finally, Chief Jason Cleary of the Manchester Fire Department asked me to remind everyone that if the alarms go off and we have to leave early, which I sincerely hope will not happen, just go calmly and quietly to the nearest exit. Any questions about electronic voting or anything else before we begin? Okay. Article 1 concerns the annual reports, and Jeffrey Bodmer Turner moves, and John Brown seconds. The article is printed in a warrant. Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Is the meeting ready to vote? Voting period is open. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. I think the voting period is not yet open. Okay, now the voting period is open. And the motion prevails by a vote of 269 to 2 with nine abstentions. Do we have an answer? Okay, we still have 300, so we're within...we're over 90%. Excuse me. Article 2 is to fix the annual salaries of elected officers, and Eli...excuse me. Eli Bowling moves, and Anne Harrison seconds. The article is presented in the warrant. Meeting ready to vote? We're gonna need to go to Article 2. We need to speed this up. Okay. And the motion is approved with 271 votes in favor, 5 no, and 8 abstentions. Excuse me. Article 3 is the appropriation for the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District, and John Brown moves, and Jeffrey Bodmer Turner seconds that the town raise an appropriate...excuse me. The sum of $223,380 for the purpose stated in the article. Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Is there discussion? Is the meeting ready to vote? Open the voting period, please. And the motion is approved with 281 in favor, 10 opposed, and 4 abstentions. And we're still more than 90%. Article 4 contains the operating budget requests of town departments and committees and includes the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. The report also contains the Finance Committee's recommended source of funding for each item, and they're found at pages 24 through 28 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. Jeff Bodmer Turner moves, and Sarah Melish seconds that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing 12 months effective July 1, 2022, and appropriate the same, the amounts presented in the expenses budget summary section under the recommended and funding sources columns of the Finance Committee report, page 28 under Article 4. Provided, however, that with the prior approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator...excuse me, is authorized to transfer unexpected funds within a summary category, for example, within general government. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend approval, and I recognize Sarah Melish for comments on behalf of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Wow, we're back inside in a beautiful new school, and there's no fog. We scrutinize the fiscal year 2023 budget for efficiencies, but have staffing challenges to address. Two years ago, we held the tax levy increase to 0% due to the pandemic and held it to 1.5% last year. We cannot continue on that path. To support the proposed budget, we will need a tax levy increase of 2.5%. Additional funding for the Memorial School, which was expected and previously approved, will add... approved, will add point seven percent to the tax rate for a total projected increase of three point two percent. What are the challenges? We expect the police department budget to be adversely impacted by the Police Reform Act. They currently rely on thirteen reserve officers to cover shifts when full-time officers are out, either planned or unplanned, six dispatch shifts per week, and special events. The Act requires newly hired reserve officers to have the same training as full-time officers, and requires existing reserve officers to receive additional training at a bridge academy and accumulate two thousand four hundred work hours by January first, twenty-twenty-seven. Thus, unless they are retired former full-time officers, the chief expects that they will leave the department and find employment elsewhere. In addition, we have funded partial pay for a disabled officer for six years, and the overtime budget is stretched. Therefore, this budget includes additional funds to hire a full-time officer to fill the position of the disabled officer. We also have challenges in the fire department. We can no longer rely on call firefighters due to additional training requirements and the fact that most of our calls are for medical services, not fires. Thus, the funding for call firefighters has been eliminated from this budget. The fire department staffs three firefighters per shift. Prior fire chiefs dropped down to a two-person shift when someone was out. Chief Cleary backfills when somebody is out to maintain a full three-person shift. Thus, a full-time floater position was added a couple of years ago. The floater is not assigned to a shift, but is assigned to fill in when somebody is out. For the past few years, overtime has been running over budget at two hundred thousand dollars a year despite the floater. Therefore, this budget includes a second floater and a decrease in the overtime budget. This budget also includes additional funds for the harbor department to increase weekend staffing to deal with heavier traffic on the water. The Board of Health requested funding for a health agent. Due to our concern over the availability of candidates qualified to handle both Title Five and health inspections, the impact on the budget line items is unclear. So we feel it is more appropriate to use American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA funds, outside of the budget to fund the position, and we'll review the hiring progress made by the Board of Health during 2022 when we review the fiscal year 2024 budget. The Manchester Essex Regional School District is struggling to maintain a budget within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half, and may require an override next year, which will impact the tax rate. Finally, the financial delta between retaining dispatch in-house and moving to the regional center is such that it is financially prudent to move to the regional center and use the funds to address the ongoing operational budget, budget challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll now go through Article four by major budget category, such as general government, and read the total amount recommended for that category by the Finance Committee. If any voter wants to ask a question or change the Finance Committee's recommendation on any line item within that category, please call out "hold," and we'll stop and identify the item number. If any voter wishes to change the Finance Committee's recommended amount on any line item, we'll take those as changes, those changes as amendments to the main motion, and vote on each one separately. When we've finished all the holds, then we'll vote on the main motion as amended if there are any changes. Until we've finished all action on Article four, reconsideration of an individual item will not require the two-thirds vote ordinarily applicable. General government, thirty-three percent of Article four, and the total amount recommended for general government is four million nine sixty, nine eighty-three, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Are there any holds under general government? Public safety, twenty-six percent of Article four, total recommended for public safety is three million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Any holds under public safety? Public works, fifteen percent of Article four, the total recommended for public works is two million three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two. Any holds under public works? Other environmental, one percent of Article four, the total recommended is seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Any holds under other?
There's a hold on, uh, public works.
I'm sorry, was there a hold on public works? What, what item? Fifty-five, street lighting. Okay, any other holds under public works? I'm sorry, I missed you. Human services, two percent of Article four, total recommended is three hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three. Any holds under human services? No. Pardon? Were there any holds under other environmental? Okay, any holds under human services? Library, three percent of Article four, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars is the recommended amount. Any holds under library? Recreation, two percent of Article four, total recommended is three hundred sixty-six thousand, ninety-three dollars. Any holds under recreation? Debt service, seven percent of Article four, total recommended is one million thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Any holds on debt service? And enterprise funds, eleven percent of Article four, total recommended for enterprise funds, one million six hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Any holds under enterprise funds? Okay, I think the only hold then was item fifty-five under public works, street lighting. Yes, would you like to speak or ask a question?
Sibella, Rosedale Avenue. That's a pretty big increase of twenty-five thousand dollars, and I know that in my neighborhood, on Pleasant Street Extension, the lights are on twenty-four-seven. So I don't know if that's happening in other neighborhoods, but I don't believe we should be paying for lights during the day. So I would like a, an answer to why that is such a big increase.
Yes, would you give us your name again? We didn't catch it.
Judy Sibella, Rosedale Avenue.
Thank you. And this is town administrator Greg Fetterfield.
So principally, we've been, in the last couple of years, just paying for electricity and not repairs in this line item. But we wanted to make sure that we are keeping up on the lights, and so we have added that additional twenty-five thousand for annual replacement and repairs to the various street lights. If you have a, a light that's on during the day, please give DPW a call. We do have the system on a wireless tracking system, so we are able to adjust if the system is working properly, and we can turn off those lights when they're not needed. So let us know, and we're happy to, to fix that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterfield. Further discussion on item fifty-five? Meeting ready to vote on the main motion, then? Press one for yes, excuse me, two for no, or three to abstain. And the motion is approved, two hundred and fifty-six in favor, twenty-four against, and seven abstentions. We have three hundred people still in attendance, so we're over ninety percent. And that concludes Article four. From here on, reconsideration rules will apply. Article five is the capital budget, and it's on pages twenty-nine and thirty of the Finance Committee pamphlet. Sarah Melish moves, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay for the items listed, and appropriate the same as presented under the recommended and funding sources columns of Article five, excuse me, in the warrant, with the following clarifications. Item twenty-six, funded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fund balance, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from water retained earnings. And item twenty-seven, funded three hundred thousand dollar, three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer enterprise fund. And I recognize Sarah Melish for remarks on the capital budget.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Finance Committee feels it's extremely important to follow our capital plan and continue to invest in our infrastructure. We have a policy that reserves may not be used to fund the operating budget, but excess reserves may be used to, for one-time capital expenditures and to fund OPEB. We feel the appropriate level of reserves, which is the total of free cash and stabilization fund, is ten percent of the total operating budget, which is the sum of the town and the school district apportionment. Since fiscal year 2016, revenue received has exceeded estimates, and actual expenses have been less than the budget, causing reserves to accumulate in excess of the ten percent target. Over the last two years, we used excess reserves to help fund the capital budget to limit the tax rate increases during the pandemic and avoid incurring additional debt. This year, since our reserves still exceed our ten percent target, the capital budget assumes the use of about nine hundred thousand in excess reserves. At the end of fiscal year 2023, we expect the reserves will be at our ten percent target, so excess reserves may not be available to help fund the capital budget in future years. To maintain our current level of capital expenditures and address larger projects such as DPW, climate change resiliency issues, et cetera, we will need to obtain more tax revenue from limited commercial district businesses that do not adversely impact the cost of town services and/or incur additional debt with debt exclusions which will impact our tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any holds on any items in the capital budget? Yes? Seventeen, when, when you speak again, would you go to the mic, please? Thanks. Did you get her name?
I didn't get her name.
And, and we didn't get your name, so.
Sylvia Afrizender, fifty-two Mascanawa Street.
Thank you.
Number seventeen.
Any other holds under Article five? Yes? Ms. Foley?
Mary Foley, one Pulaski Drive, number three.
What, what item did you want to hold?
Number three, the storage building DPW garage area.
Thank you.
Christina Delicio, Sixth Lincoln Avenue, I'd like to put a hold on number ten, village parking study.
Okay. Any other holds? Oh, yes, in the back.
Michelle Kulik, thirty-eight Forest Street. Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure where it might fit, but I have a question about the, all the changes at White Beach, all the boulders that are being placed there, and I don't know where that, that would come under the DPW budget. There's, I haven't found it in, in the, in the Finance Committee booklet.
Well, do you have an item number under Article five?
I, I don't, and I, and I wanted to know if there was, uh, somewhere that I could ask about it. About, uh, White Beach.
Well, we're, we're limited at town meeting to subjects that are in the warrant.
Okay.
So unless you can find something in the warrant, we're not going to be able to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other holds? So I have holds then on items three, ten, and seventeen. Okay, we'll come back to the person with the hold on item three. Yes, ma'am? Did you want to ask a question about item three? No? Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm getting the, uh.
All right, you were looking the other way.
No, I was, I was actually thinking of the wrong person, so my mistake.
So my question is, what is this for? The storage building DPW garage area, could you be specific of what that hundred thousand covers?
Mr. Fetterfield?
So, yes, I can have Chuck, Chuck Dam, our DPW director, speak to this.
I think, I think your mic isn't working.
All right, sorry. I'll have Chuck Dam, our DPW director, speak to this, but in essence, what is being proposed is a, basically a pole barn that would allow the vehicles to be kept out of the weather in order for them to extend their life. They do take a beating, being out in the, in the winter weather all winter long. So this would be something that we could move fairly easily if we relocate, relocate the DPW operations to a new location. But Chuck, you want to add any more details?
Yes, I'll recognize Chuck Dam, the director of DPW.
Oh, there we go. So this building would be replacing one that we had to demolish four or five years ago, and so this is basically to replace that barn, which we used as cold storage. So this would be a similar thing in the same footprint as that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dam. Any other questions about item three? And Ms. Delicio, I think you had the hold on item ten.
Thank you. So last year, this parking study came up, and the estimate at that time for comparable parking study was fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So my question is, what are we getting for twenty thousand dollars? And is it going to be worth the money that we're spending? What are we going to get for twenty thousand dollars? A going study costs fifty to sixty, why are we spending twenty?
Mr. Fetterfield?
So we are proposing to do a fairly comprehensive parking analysis of the Village Core area, and it'll include data collecting for monitoring how parking is used, and to try to get a better handle. Sorry.
Better, better start again.
All right, I'll start over. So we are hoping to embark on a comprehensive parking study of the Village Core area, and it'll include new data collection. We're hoping to use volunteers for that data collection. We'll be training committee members and citizens who would like to help with that in order to help to keep the price down. We have received partial support from MAPC to help, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to help us with the project, and they are offering their services to complete this study for a total of just over thirty thousand. study for a total of just over 30,000. So 20,000 is what we're asking for the voters to support. MIPC is kicking in just under 11,000 to the effort, and we would, by using volunteers, be able to come in at a price at around 30,000 rather than that 50 to $60,000 quote that, that you mentioned.
Further discussion?
So how would I ask to have that removed and voted on separately?
Well, you can, you could propose an amendment to the main motion to, do you want to delete it?
Yes.
Okay, you can move to delete Item 10 from Article Five, and that would be an amendment to the main motion.
Can I say so moved?
Yes. And I'll just ask, is that seconded? It's seconded. Any further discussion? Yes. Ms. Creighton?
Sarah Creighton, I'm vice chair of the Planning Board. On November 22nd, the Planning Board voted to support the town planner's request for $20,000 for a parking study for the downtown. And we heard later in March about this from the MIPC, who is going to do the study. On the November 22nd meeting, we voted, I believe, five to two with two members absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Further discussion on Item 10, the parking study? So this will take a minute because we have to create a new slide in the program. So the question is, do you approve of the, of Item 10, or do you, do you approve deletion of Item 10? Because I think that was the motion. The Village Parking Study from Article Five. So does everybody understand what's, what's at issue? So if you, if you want to get rid of the parking study from Article Five, you're going to vote yes. If you want to keep the parking study, you're going to vote no. Yes. Is that clear? Further discussion? Is there a hand up over there? You need, we need the mic on first.
Well, let's see if we can relift it. Thank you. I'm a new resident to this wonderful town, and I see the traffic moving in many directions and it's getting heavier by the day, and I am opposed to anybody objecting to, to it, if I may say so, because this town needs to do everything possible to keep order for police fire and also the movement of traffic. So I believe that we've got to think about this carefully, and it probably has been thought of carefully, so I object to the objection.
Could you give us your name and address, sir?
My name is Peter H. Stragones. I live off Elm Street.
Thank you. Mr. Keough?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Thomas Keough, 20 Lincoln Street. After 12 years on the board, I can tell you the two things that seem to get people's more interested is either taking down a tree or eliminating a parking space. So in this case, I think what we're doing is we're doing our best to live with the Planning Board's recommendation. What the Planning Board wants to do is to make a study to see if we can gain more parking spaces. If we can even the parking out in town, it'll make it easier for residents as well as nonresidents. I would recommend that you support the Planning Board and not delete this from Article Five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Ms. Delicio?
Thank you. My concern is not the parking study. My concern is what, who is doing the parking study? For those who don't know anything about the MIPC, they have specific goals and agendas, and one of them is to find more housing in our dense downtown and to promote the MBTA communities. So my concern is not the parking study. My concern is who's doing the parking study, and therefore, again, I request that we find an independent contractor, not the MIPC, to do this study. I'm very concerned about the parking. I wish an independent contractor would do it, not the MIPC, a government agency that is dictating how our small coastal community is being reimagined.
Mr. Fetterspiel?
So I would not characterize MIPC as a organization that's trying to take over. I really do object to that characterization of them as an organization. They have supported us quite substantially in our efforts, and ultimately, it is you as voters who have the say. We are relying on them for technical assistance, and this is a low-cost, efficient way to get this longstanding desire to have a more comprehensive parking study completed. So obviously, you're, everyone's entitled to their opinions about different governmental organizations. I would stress that we, you, you as the voters, have the ultimate say here. Nothing will be approved that doesn't go first before you in terms of zoning amendments, et cetera. We get the information, we present it to you, you make your careful decisions, and we go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Further discussion on Item 10? Meeting ready to vote. So if you're, if you're in favor of deleting Item... Yeah, but we're doing 10. That's okay. So I want to be sure everybody understands how, how we're voting on this. If you're in favor of deleting Item 10 from Article Five, in other words, getting rid of the parking study, you should vote yes. If you're in favor of keeping the parking study in Article Five, as recommended by the Planning Board, then you should vote no. And if you're confused or don't, can't make up your mind, then you can abstain. But I hope no one is confused. Any, any questions about what the vote means? Okay. If you're in favor of deleting Item 10, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. And if you want to abstain, press 3. And the voting period is open. Thank you. And the amendment to delete Item 10 is defeated, 230 votes to 80 with eight abstentions, and we have 310 voters in attendance, so we're well above 90%. And now we have a hold on Item 17.
Thank you. I, I would like to know why a...
Would you, would you give us your name again? Because it's...
Sylvia, Sylvia Freesenberg, 52 Masconomo Street.
Thank you.
I, I just don't quite understand why in a peaceful, quiet place like Manchester by the Sea, we need to spend 12,600 on tasers. If somebody could explain that, that would be great.
Is that for you? And I'll recognize Lieutenant Mark McCoy of the Manchester Police Department. Just to explain why Todd Fitzgerald, the chief, is not here. He had planned a, made a long trip to Europe before the selectmen moved the date from April 4th to April 25th, so he's on vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. We are asking to increase our TASER program. Currently, the department owns three TASERS, and we have owned them since 2017, and we share them, so the only people that have TASERS are people on the shifts. So what we are asking is to purchase 14 TASERS upfront, and it's paid over a five-year payment plan, and it's called the TASER 7 certification and VR pro, and plan. And this would allow us to issue each permanent officer, each full-time officer, a TASER permanently, and so they, they have the use of force, as does the people on the shift, if they're working a detail or some other event. And it also comes with the virtual reality training, which will save us money for our recertification. And it's basically to have all officers have the same use of force, if, to keep everyone safe, keep them safe and the people that we deal with.
Thank you, Lieutenant McCoy. Further discussion? Yes?
Sylvia Freesenberg, 52 Masconomo Street. I'm curious to know how often the TASERS we have, have been used. Could you tell me about that?
I believe we had two deployments last year, two or three.
Thank you. I saw another hand up over here somewhere. Further discussion on Item 17? Yes, sir?
Yes, Edward Martin, 25 Bennett Street. I would advise people to think about the purchase of TASERS as a good thing, and the reason why is it's a non-lethal way of stopping someone. Now, we've all known someone who's had a, a reaction to medication, you know, and sometimes these reactions are psychological. And, you know, you could have someone who's taking a new medication when it builds up into their system. They have a negative reaction, and they get violent. They grab a knife. If a police officer responding to that incident only has a firearm, he only has one course of action. And I think that's why TASERS and other forms of non-lethal force are important and are valuable investment.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'm sorry. Were you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Further discussion? Yes?
Alad Abryant, 57 Old Essex Road. Are, are the, is this TASER program that you call it, is it required for your certification?
Yes, the MPTC requires us to recertify every year. We have to do two recertifications, and firearms, and one in TASER.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant, and thank you, Lieutenant McCoy. Further discussion? Someone way in the back.
Hi, Andrew Creighton on Proctor Street, and I was just wondering, with these, without these additional units, how likely are the current units that we have going to last? And is there a dire need that we need these based on the amount that we have right now and the current quality or function of them?
We've had these current three TASERS since 2017, and as I said earlier, the only people that have, we have three, we have three TASERS, we have two to three people on each shift. So guys working a detail or guys working at the fireworks or at a parade may not have the same use of force and tools on their tool, tool belt than people on the shift. So, but they usually last about 10 years.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 17? Yes?
John Carlson, 9 Walker Road. I would strongly encourage to support this purchase. All too recently, we saw in the news where an officer accidentally drew a firearm instead of a TASER, and anything we can do to give our officers more experience and more comfortable with a TASER so they pull the right one when an issue arises, as opposed to possibly a firearm, I think that is a wise choice of funds.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Further discussion? Okay, then we have before us the main motion, which is Sarah Melish's motion to approve Item, Article Five with those two clarifications that I mentioned earlier. If you're in favor of that, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. If you're not sure, I was saying. And the voting period is open. The motion under Article Five is approved, 242 in favor, 41 against, with 12 abstentions, and that is 295, and we have 310 people still in attendance, so we're over 90%. Thank you very much. Article Six is the school budget article, and there are three motions. You should have the handout with all three motions. And Ken Warnock of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee moves the article as stated in the handout, or was the motion, excuse me, as stated in the handout, and Matthew Harrington, also of the Regional School Committee, seconds. The Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen both recommend approval, all three, and this is, this first motion is simply an annual reconfirmation of the formula to allocate school expenses. It's, we were required to reconfirm it every year by statute, and so that's what we do. Remarks, Mr. Warnock?
Yes, I'll be, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'd like to begin by thanking the residents and taxpayers of this town on behalf of the school committee and all the members of our community for their support of the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Specifically, want to express our gratitude for the funding and dedication of this new building and our first annual town meeting in here. The original school on this spot was dedicated in July of 1952, so we're within a few months of the 70th anniversary of service of that, of that last building, and I hope that this building will similarly be able to serve for at least another two and a half generations of our citizens in Manchester and Essex. And I'd also direct folks, I don't know tonight or another time, the plaque with the names of the 13 individuals that the original memorial school was dedicated for has been transferred to just off the front lobby here, kind of continuing the tradition of naming it in their memory. In terms of community engaged projects that the district has done as well, we've also completed a new playground at the Essex Elementary School and are in the initial stages of planning to address that building, as it was also originally built in the 1950s. It was 1957, and soon requires renewal or replacement. So I'll be brief in the rest of my remarks. Any questions? There's pretty comprehensive write-ups in both a mailer that went to all citizens in town as well as in the, the annual town meeting guide. MERSD, including its staff and students continue to recover from the pandemic setbacks. We are grateful to all in our community, from taxpayers to teachers and parents, for keeping the students at the center of our mission. In support of that goal, we've updated and relaunched our district's strategic plan to guide our district-wide improvement plans and goals. The most pressing issue that I seek your support on over the next year has to do with our budget and funding. This is the first year in my six years on the school committee that we are not providing level services. We have had to cut academic programs and delay planned athletic field maintenance, and more of the same lies ahead if we cannot increase revenues. For history, level services typically grows at 3.5 to 4.5, 3.5 to 4% for most districts, which runs beyond the limits of Proposition 2.5. This situation results in an increasing deficit year on year, which must be addressed in ways including the use of reserves and ultimately a Proposition 2.5 override. Our last such override was seven years ago in fiscal year 6. Our last such override was seven years ago in fiscal year 16, and we anticipate seeking a revenue increase or a revenue correction or an override, all mean the same, from both towns next year for our fiscal year '24 budget. Year on year, the district maintains fiscal discipline in the face of state mandated program increases and healthcare cost increases that typically run over 8% each year. Our reserves are no longer sufficient to prevent program cuts and a corresponding reduction in student services. So I appreciate your continued support as we strive to maintain the excellent educational program that people of Manchester and Essex have come to expect. We remain committed to the education, well-being, and safety of our future citizens. Please join me in voting to support Article 6 and fund our public schools for FY '23.
Thank you, Ken. Is there discussion on the motion number one? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of confirming the school assessment formula in the regional district agreement, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. If you want to abstain, press 3. And that motion is approved by a vote of 273 in favor, 20 opposed with eight abstentions. And we're still over 90%. Town clerk just passed me a note saying that people in the back are having trouble hearing, so let me ask if we can turn the sound up a little bit.
Let me make sure the room is linked.
We're making sure that both rooms are linked into the sound system. That may be the problem. But if you're, if you're having trouble hearing in the back, please let me know however you have to do it. I'm, I'm sorry about that. I, we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't, didn't have any way of knowing unless you tell us. So hopefully that'll, that'll correct the problem and we'll be good to go from here. A report on the test question. The Celts are up at halftime. 58 to 50. So we're on to motion number two, and Ken Warnock moves motion number two on the handout, and Matthew Harrington seconds. Is there discussion under motion number two? Yes, sir?
I just wondered what academic programs had to be cut in order to fit in this, fit this budget?
Mr. Warnock?
So on that one, we have had, there've been a number of cuts proposed for specifics I can call on Pam Ravi, but we did have to cut a foreign language program at the elementary level. That's all so far. There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of planned things that will come into next year with things going the way they are.
I'll recognize Pam Bodwin, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to answer the question in one second, but thank you very much, Manchester and Essex, for all that you did to make this building possible. It's wonderful to be here in it with you tonight. If you go to our budget page, you're going to see the history of cuts going back to 2016. Since 2016, we've cut $2.7 million in a combination of classroom teacher reductions. This year is the first year we've done our first direct discretionary program reduction. It is the world language program at the elementary school and potentially also at the sixth grade level. We've also gone through a series of reorganizations of, we're reorganizing central office, and we're also reorganizing our intervention service protocol for both efficiency and what we think will actually give us a better outcome. But as Ken has said, as we look to next year, I think we're, we've made peace with where we're at this year, and we brought the budget in at our requested level of 3.5% growth. The way the apportionment formula is working out this year, Essex is carrying a bit more of a burden than they have in the past, and that has presented some challenges for them. I think if you look in your budget book, you'll see that the growth rate for Manchester is actually 2% over last year. So what we're projecting out to next year is if we have to make the same level of cuts and absorb our typical growth rate, we will be in a deeper dive into discretionary program reduction. So that could mean anything from a reduction in AP program at the high school, an increase in class size overall, and continued teacher reductions to make budget. So happy to answer any follow-up questions if there are any.
Thank you, Pam. Yes, sir?
Dr. Peter Dragones from Elm Street area. I come from a family of PhDs in foreign languages. My late sister Felice Jade Dragones was, at age 88, was going to Washington to propose language development, starting on a basic level. And I'm very urged to hear today that a foreign language has been reduced from the curriculum without the input of families who are responsible for their children, and nobody has said today which language they reduce and for what reason they, they removed it. There are schools within Essex County who teach German, Chinese, French, Italian, and a few other languages, starting at even third grade level. So I think it's really tarnishes the educational experience of Manchester Essex, which has a very good reputation, by the way, as I, from families in Hamilton and all over about this school system. But I'm very bothered intellectually as well as from a practical point, that getting ready students to go into the college environment are stuck with only one choice in a foreign language. That's unacceptable. Today, the Department of Education and Languages is entertaining what they call immersion, learning 1,000 words of a foreign language before you start learning grammar. That is the forefront of language education. And I think it's, they could have found something else to remove so that our young children are better equipped to go into the world because the world is small today. And we can't just depend on the English language or the Spanish language. So I'm hard put to accept the fact that without the input of these fine people here, very educated people here around the world experience, are left with this, I think it's, it's a burden. That's my opinion, but I think it's a well-taken opinion nationally. So we've got to be with the program, as, as my son would say, "Dad, get with the program." And at my older age, I'm still trying to do that.
Sir, excuse me, you're, you're over two minutes, so could you wrap up on another sentence?
I'm finished. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to express it.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote on motion number two? If you're in favor of the operating budget motion, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. If you're abstaining, press 3. And the motion is approved by a vote of 231 to 45 with 22 abstentions. And that is, that's 298, and we're, we're at 310 voters, I think, still. 308. 308. But that's still over 90%. And motion number three, Ken Warnock moves motion number three on the handout, and Matthew Harrington seconds. Is there discussion? This is the budget for debt service. Any discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of motion number three, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. If you're abstaining, press 3. And that motion is approved, 262 to 17 with 18 abstentions. And we're still over 90%. Article 7 is the Community Preservation Committee recommendation. And we're, we have some changes. It's all the same except for in this last one, we took out 5, 6, and 7. And that is going to be for reserve fund balance, reserve for open space, not just the general fund balance. I don't understand this. So I'm going to let, this is, this is a motion from Jack Burke of the Community Preservation Committee, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds. And I have a version before it was corrected, so I'm going to let the town administrator tell us what the changes are. The motion I have is Jack Burke of the Community Preservation Committee moves, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds, the article is presented in the warrant with the following clarifications. Items 1 and 8 are to be funded from FY 2023 Community Preservation Estimated Receipts. Item 3 is to be funded with $300,000 from FY 2023 Community Preservation Estimated Receipts and $500,000 from the FY 2022 Community Preservation Fund Balance. And items 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11 are to be funded from FY 2022 Community Preservation Fund Balances for the purposes stated. But Mr. Fetterspiel is going to state some changes to that.
So in that last cluster that the moderator just read, he said 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11 were all coming from the general fund balance, the current fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund. But numbers 5, 6, and 7, the change here is to say that those three will come out of the general fund balance reserved for open space. So those three are pulled, are pulled out and not from the general fund balance, but to the fund balance reserved for the open space. So that's the change. Those three items, 5, 6, and 7, instead of coming from the general fund, general fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund, they're coming from the Community Preservation Fund Balance reserved for open space.
Does everybody understand that? No. Okay. Let me see if I can address some basics. In the, within the Community Preservation Fund, we are, we are required to spend, or we're limited to spending funds for certain purposes. Open space and recreation, community housing, historic preservation, and administrative expenses. Within each of those three categories or four categories, each year if we don't spend it all, we create, we deposit to a reserve fund specific to that category. We also have a reserve fund that is general. In other words, funds that have been accumulated that can be applied to any of those purposes. So the change that we're talking about here that, that Mr. Fetterspiel has outlined is that instead of coming from the general fund balance that can be expended for any of the purposes, 5, 6, and 7 are coming from the fund balance that is restricted to recreation and open space. Is that clear? I hope so, because I don't think I can do any better. So that, that then is, is the motion. Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Are there any holds on any of the lines within the motion? Yes, ma'am. Would you go to the mic, please?
Number 3.
And your name and address?
Oh, Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road.
Thank you.
Should I ask now or would?
Yeah, why don't you ask now?
Okay. It's just a question. I know in the, I think in the past, we looked at a study for this area, and looking at this amount, has that study come back with information about the site? And this is actually to develop the site? Is this a hold for future development? Just trying to understand what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Fetterspiel?
So the request is for 800,000 under this line to, to construct the new athletic field. So it's gone beyond the study phase, so this would be for the actual construction of the new playfield.
Ms. Rogers?
Was the study results presented to the town yet?
So the, the Park and Rec Committee and Park and Recreation Department completed a, a master plan of fields for the town, and this was, one of their top recommendations was to develop a new field at this site. And then that was presented to the Board of Selectmen, and they approved that, and then got into the budget process and the, again, approval from the Selectmen and from the Finance Committee.
This is an, okay. Was a public meeting held to discuss the outcome of the study and the ramifications?
So the Park and Rec Committees' meetings were certainly public, and those, the study was presented at their meeting, and then the Park and Rec folks came to a Selectmen's meeting and presented to them as well, and those, that was a public meeting.
I move that this be separated for a separate vote. Thank you.
Well, you don't need to move to separate it for a separate vote. You can, you can move to change it? Do you want to move to change it?
So I thought in the past you could hold something for separation from the article.
Well, that's a, okay, you can do that. That's a motion to divide the question.
Yes.
And that's a majority vote?
I move to separate, or, item 3, to hold a separate vote on it.
Okay. Is that seconded? It's seconded. Yes, ma'am.
Isabel Avates to Masconomo Street. I can remember that that Pine Street lot was a toxic waste site and that houses had to be moved away from it in order for it to be restored, as it were. And so I don't know if the question behind Sandy's question is, is it safe for our children? And I, I think that's a pretty basic question. If houses had to be removed and it had to be, it was an official toxic waste site, is it safe?
Mr. Fetterspiel?
So working with the State's Department of Nonmetal Protection, they've done a complete analysis of it. It was quite extensive. You voters have spent quite a bit of money on cleaning up the site. So the site does have heavy metals, and those heavy metals are still in the upland area. So it has, it has a top layer of soil above that. And so the prohibition is that no one can live on the site. But it is permitted to have people play on the site. You just can't live full-time on the site. And so they have deemed it appropriate that an athletic field is an appropriate use if, if you so choose. It is considered safe.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterspiel. Further discussion? Ms. Delicio?
Just had a follow-up question. I just assumed and believe that we voted money for a study at fall town meeting. Correct? To study the feasibility of this field? So I think that's what we're looking for. Was that study completed? That wasn't part of the master plan. At special town meeting, we voted for study for this field. At special town meeting, we voted for study for this field.
So there was a, a study for Park and Rec Field Master Plan. I'll let, I'll let Cheryl Marshall give more details.
I'll recognize Cheryl Marshall, the Director of Parks and Recreation.
I, yes, there is a design study going on right now. So the feasibility study was part of the master plan and right now there is a design study. And it is at about 25% as the picture when you came in, that comes from that, Weston and Sampson Design. And there will be more public meetings coming up, but timeline-wise, we're going to get the vote now. The money won't actually be spent until obviously that design is finished. And that does include a couple of public meetings for some of the questions people have on it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Further discussion? Okay, the motion we have then is to divide the question and vote separately on item three. If, if you, if the meeting votes yes on that, votes favorably on that, then we will have a vote on whether to approve the expenditure. So we're going to have two votes on this. One to divide the question and then the second one, if that passes, will vote on the merits of item three. So if you're in favor of dividing the question and taking up, and voting separately on item three, press yes. If you're opposed to dividing the question and taking three separately, press no. And if you don't want to vote, press three. Okay, the voting period is open. The clock is now ticking. And the motion to divide the question is defeated. 147 no to 135 yes with nine abstentions. And we have 300 and what? 301 people still in attendance. So we're over 90%. So then we'll vote, we'll vote on the main motion, including item three for the burn dump field, as stated, as I stated it, and as Mr. Fetischfield modified it. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? We're voting on all the items under Article seven. No. So if you're in favor of the CPC motion under Article seven, press one. If you're opposed, press two. And if you're abstaining, press three. And that motion is approved 225 to 56 with 11 abstentions. Article eight is the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund appropriation. Ann Harrison moves and Rebecca Jake seconds that the town transfer from the undesignated fund balance, the sum of $278,173 for the purpose stated in the article. Finance Committee recommends approval, as does the Board of Selectmen. Any discussion? Meeting ready to vote under Article eight? If you're in favor of that appropriation, press one. Opposed, press two. Abstaining, press three. The voting period is open. And that motion is approved 273 to eight with nine abstentions. Attendance is 301 still?
Yes.
And we're over 90%. This is good. Moving along. Article nine is an article that we're required to vote annually to set a limit on the town's revolving fund for Parks and Recreation. And Jeff Bodmer Turner moves and Rebecca Jake seconds. The article is printed as a warrant. Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of setting this limit, press one. If you're opposed, press two. And if you're abstaining, press three. And that motion is approved 271 to eight with five abstentions. And we still have 301 people, but we're with it.
We're down to 295.
Up, we're down to 295. So we're, we're still at 90% or more. Thank you all for staying. Article 10 is a proposed zoning amendment. And Gary Gilbert of the Planning Board moves and Rebecca Jake seconds to amend the town's zoning bylaw as presented in Article 10 of the warrant. Finance Committee recommends approval due to the potential revenue generation of new buildings, but it reserves the ability to review proposed projects on a case-by-case basis through the special permitting process. The Board of Selectmen recommend approval. And Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5 requires that the Planning Board hold a hearing on proposed zoning amendments. And the Planning Board held that hearing on this amendment on March 28th. The statute also requires that most zoning amendments must be approved at town meeting by a two-thirds vote. And that requirement applies in this case. So this will be two-thirds. Now I'll recognize Gary Gilbert for the Planning Board.
Can you hear me? Yep. The Limited Commercial District, called the LCD, includes all the land north of Route 128 going in the direction of Essex. And this proposal specifically targets the area east of School Street near the Manchester Athletic Club, as you can see a diagram on some handouts that were given. The Limited Commercial District has that name because we limited the possibilities of growth there so much that very little has been built and we have deprived ourselves of the possibility of much-needed tax revenue from reasonable, reasonable development. This proposal is to change regulations so that they are more appropriate for laboratory uses while also requiring complete site plan and special permit review. One change allows increased building heights, which reflects the needs for laboratories for mechanical equipment up in their ceilings. Taller, taller buildings also have smaller footprints, and this also accomplishes the sustainability goal of using up less land for a given building, thus protecting more open space and minimizing impacts on ground and surface water. It is not a casual statement to say that the town needs increased tax revenue. Our master plan identified a list of substantial projects that the town will need to pay for in the near future. I'm sure everyone here wishes to avoid regular annual tax overrides to pay for the identified projects ahead of us, let alone other projects we would voluntarily like to do. The kind of development we are talking about allowing in the east end of the LCD has the least impacts in our community because it does not involve housing and is almost completely hidden from view. This is an opportunity to make good use of this part of town, heal this already disturbed land, to reforest it, and to make it a welcome part of our community. It's very important to emphasize here that when we speak of lab uses requiring a special permit, we mean that absolutely nothing can be built as of right. And we retain the right to veto or deny any plans submitted to us that we feel are detrimental to the town or the environment. The whole area lies in the Water Resource District, which already has 14 pages of regulations for us to administer on all projects there. Our projects, all projects require site plan review and the water resource review, while laboratories will also require these two reviews as well as the comprehensive special permit review. The Planning Board and the Conservation Commission will work earnestly together to review any project proposals, and both of these boards take their jobs very seriously. I can assure you of that. The Planning Board has voted unanimously in favor of these reasonable bylaw changes as well as the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and we encourage your yes vote tonight. And we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. And I'll recognize Becky Jakes of the Board of Selectmen.
Good evening. As many of you know, the Board of Selectmen engaged with SLV in a LIP, local initiative, I mean, local initiative program. During the LIP, we heard repeatedly, why can't we have a good business built in the LCD over by the MAC? We also heard regrets regarding the town vote that was not to allow New England BioLabs in the LCD. We now have an opportunity with another lab, a known and respected local company. The bylaws being changed do not allow the use by right, as Gary said. Any applicant must go through the special permit process. As a prior member and chair of the Planning Board, I know the process to be exhaustive and exhausting, and am confident the special permit process will yield an excellent, excellent outcome. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support the changes to the LCD bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Excuse me. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends a change in the allowable uses in the Limited Commercial District on the east side of Upper School Street to include labs and research and development businesses. Since the use will require an application for a special permit, we feel a cost-benefit analysis can be included in the application process to ensure special permits are only granted when the tax revenue to be received is substant, will substantially exceed costs incurred by the town for additional services. Thank you and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there discussion? Yes, Ms. Rogers. Can we turn on the mic, please, Bob? Yes, sir. I, I think that mic isn't working. The, the mic isn't working. Nope. Try again. Hello?
Peter DeGronis again. Sorry to get up. Is it a secret? It was in the cricket that the company out of Gloucester is trying to acquire property on, on the said location, that would be west of 128, to build a company that does chips, microchips, or the framework for microchips. Am I wrong? I don't know why it wasn't said, why it wasn't described, what company wants to come in there with the just recent comments. And also I'd like to add to it that we have to preserve the nature of the town. There's plenty of land in the back to build, so we can still look at forest and not look, and not be another Beverly, which is lined up with buildings all over the place. You can't get through the town, it looks ugly. So we have a commitment to make the history of this town and to keep it looking the way it is and feeling the way it is rather than loading it up with commercial buildings that look like, that don't look very nice and are not well-designed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rogers. I love technology.
Okay, hi, thanks. Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I'd like to hold for discussion on Article 10, B, B, and D.
Well, we're not, we don't have holds on the non-financial articles, so you can just make your comments.
Okay. So item number B, which is different than item number A, as well as all the others, are addressing bylaws that do not require special permit, only site review, which is a very important thing to call out. BB raises heights from 35 to 55 feet in this whole area of east of School Street in the LCD. These changes apply to land that directly runs by Sawmill Brook. It's environmentally sensitive and includes elevations of over 125 feet, some of the highest points in Manchester. Building at this height and adding this amount of building height, which accounts for almost five layers of a, of a normal building, would tower over conservation land, would tower over 128, and be highly visible from some of the neighborhoods in town. I vote no. I recommend that the town develop sub-districts within the LCD. Many towns put together sub-districts, or they call them overlays. And that way we can make sure that we're carving out areas and applying bylaws in building heights that make sense across this whole land. It's an extreme change to be asking for this. On D, the doubling of building coverage height from, building coverage in general in land that's very environmentally sensitive from 20 to 40%, eliminating the minimum of 25% to be natural or landscaped was not mentioned here whatsoever. Eliminating requirements of limiting parking for 25%, adding up to 60% of impervious surfaces in these kinds of lands. This includes land that is not only east of School Street, but includes that west of Pine, which is next to a lot of conservation land. We call them the Western Woods, that we should not be promoting 60%, up to 60% impervious surfaces in this day and age. So I request heartily that while special permit for labs might make sense, that these heights, these impervious surfaces, by allowing so much building surface in areas that we're going to be looking at, from the trustees of the reservations monoliths, from the heights of MAC conservation land, that's going to be almost all cement, it, it just doesn't make sense for this. I think that we can make smarter regulations.
Ms. Rogers, excuse me.
And regulations that take into account.
You've gone over two minutes, so I'd ask you to conclude.
Right. I think, I think that we should go back to the table and come back to town meeting, go back to the Planning Board, and ask them to make regulations that make sense and carve up this district so that we develop heights and the amount of building coverage to make sense for varying areas within this part of the LCD. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir, in the back.
Can I use this one? Don Schwartz Ocean Street. I under, am I correct?
Excuse me, I recognize the gentleman in the back.
Hi, Nick DeSherbin in 173 School Street. Just as a point of information, does anybody have the information about how tall the MAC building, the Manchester Athletic Club building is at this point? It's, it's substantial. I don't know whether, whether it approaches 55 feet or...
Mr. Gilbert, do you know the answer? Could you go to the mic?
I, I don't have definitive information, but I was there with a laser level and stuff. I think the main MAC building... I think the main MAC building is right around 28 or 30 feet at the, at the peak.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. This is Sarah Creighton of the Planning Board.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of the questions that were asked. Why a height of 55 feet? And that allows for commercial uses of about three stories with lab-type buildings, which require about 15 feet floor-to-floor height is common in those kinds of buildings. And to allow a little bit greater height, as Gary said, will shrink the footprint of a similarly sized building. The second question, so these are not towers, and they are not five floors, as was previously stated. Why are we changing the lot coverage? We are proposing to allow changes from 20% for structures to 40% for structures and 25% for parking to, what is it, to 40% for accessory and parking. And the reason we are doing this is that the lot coverages are really designed for traditional residential developments where yards and gardens benefit the residents. Commercial offices don't require these large landscaped recreation areas. Our current regulations are overly restrictive and inconsistent with the best practices for commercial development. We want to encourage the, these types of commercial uses, and we desire to get the revenue from the property taxes. But let me remind you that those set, that those lot coverages will be part of the site plan review, and thus the special permit. So things that can happen with parking areas, for example, is to use pervious pavement, which will allow the water to seep through, that kind of thing. And then lastly, in terms of why we are removing the lot width, we have a, we are not changing the five-acre minimum for the, for the minimum size for the lots. So lot width that is 500-feet restriction is really designed to avoid pork chop lots, and with a five-acre minimum, that's not necessary. So hopefully that's addressed the questions that were asked.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. And the gentleman who was up and then sat down.
May I?
Yes.
Don Schwartz, Ocean Street. Regarding what would be going on in this tall building, am I correct in my understanding that cell signaling technology is one of the major considerations here? I believe they're active in the development and production of microprocessors, and the country is in the midst, perhaps not appreciated by many people, of a supply line crisis in basic electronic components and microprocessors. Does anybody know if cell signaling technologies is a major part of this, and if they indeed are a powerful source of producing microprocessors that would help protect this country against things like, for example, a war in Taiwan, kind of analogous to what's gone on with Ukraine and Russia?
I think Mr. White may know the answer.
Nick White, 9 Spirek Hill. I'm in the field of microprocessors. Cell signaling has nothing to do with that whatsoever. It's a biotech company. Do I need to say any more?
No.
Did everybody hear the response?
No.
Mr. White said that he is, works in the area of microchips and technology, and that cell signaling technology does not do that. They, they work in the area of biotechnology. I got that right, Nick? Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Paul Godonis, 56 Mascanoma. So earlier, we heard how our budget situation is already impacting the education of our children and grandchildren. Budget cuts reduce teachers in the classrooms, reduce languages, and we already heard from the school superintendent that the tax pressure is just going to go up in the future because they're going to have to ask for a tax override, increase in the budget just to preserve the reduced level that we have today. So here's an opportunity to use land that has been just fallow. It's out of the mainstream, and it's an opportunity to bring clean commercial businesses, not manufacturing, but laboratory space, good jobs in the area. It won't impact the commute into downtown. It's right off of 128, and it could help us alleviate the size of future tax increases. So I vote we should do this for our children.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rogers, I see your hand up, but I'm going to give others an opportunity before I come back to you, but I will come back.
Ben Conway from 7 Proctor Street. I don't know how many people know Michael Combs or know of cell signaling technologies, but if you go into the building, to any questions about the environmental impact that the building would have, Michael Combs, his, the property around cell signaling is, is kept in pristine natural conditions, and inside the building itself is a, Michael's created a, almost a biosphere. So I think that the idea that he would in some way impact the, the environment negatively should be overlooked.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion before I come back to Ms. Rogers? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Maury Creighton, 37 Proctor Street, member of the Finance Committee. I think it's important to separate that what we're talking about here, zoning changes, to try to make the town of Manchester more attractive to businesses coming to town. We've been wrestling with financial issues for years and years, and this is a great opportunity to look at a way to increase the revenue for the town to offset some of the increasing costs happening in different areas. It so happens that the first person at the doorstep here is cell signaling, and they are a very, very well-respected company, and we're lucky to have them in front of us. But the overall discussion here is really about a zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Again, the point is not the issue of the lab. We're not voting on the lab. What the issue at hand on B, B, and on D and the others is that it applies to all buildings, all commercial building in this area. It does not necessarily apply to labs. It does not require a special permit. We can vote for labs to come in, but the key is, is that this entire area on the LCD includes extremely high land. It includes land that's closer to Sawmill Brook than some of the area that people are talking about with the quarry. The land that cell signaling is looking at includes that 125 feet. When you add 55 plus 15, that gets close to 200 feet. We can do an overlay that even includes areas that split up that property so that some of their buildings are higher and other buildings are lower, but we need to protect ourselves. We need to protect the area in the LCD that is west of Pine Street. We need to protect the areas next to Sawmill Brook. We're just not, we're not talking about this project. We're talking about zoning changes and no special permits that will be required from any business that comes in, that we may not know them as well. So this is what we're voting on. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. If you want to be recognized, would you? Yes, please do. Thank you. Bye, hon.
If I understood what was just said, it was said that there's no special permit required, but Section A says that anything in this area would be subject to a special permit. Is that not correct?
I believe it is, but I'm going to let Ms. Creighton respond.
Yes, the laboratory, the uses that we are proposing to add in this bylaw will require a special permit. In addition...
So the answer to your question is yes?
Yes, for the added uses. In addition, as Gary pointed out, anything in the, this area already requires site plan review, which is a very similar process. And similarly, the Water Resource District requires a special permit with its 14 pages of regulations. And lastly, to correct Ms. Rogers, B is the Limited Commercial District in the area east of School Street is the area that we have proposing a height allowance of 55 feet and with, not throughout the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. There was a gentleman standing in the back looking to be recog... Yes, sir.
Leach, Summer Street. Somebody mentioned tax revenue, and I'm just curious, over the past couple of years, we've seen enormous amounts of sales and remodeling and rebuilding of the, of homes. Does the, do the assessors have any idea how much increased revenue that's going to be generated from the increased assessments on the houses that were sold or improved in the last couple of years?
Could we, could you get your name again, please, under us?
Kevin Leach.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Melish of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The way the tax levy rates are determined is based on the budget that we vote for, and if the assessments go up, the tax rate may go down, but you have a higher value, so the increase in taxes remains the same. It's just, might be spread out differently if your house increased in value greater than your neighbor's, but you're still going to see for this year a 3.2% increase because we need to raise that additional money for taxes, irrespective of what the assessments are.
I think Mr. Leach's question was whether or not the assessors are taking into account improvements and new construction and increases in value.
Well, increases in value don't impact it, but new growth would, and there's an assumption in the, in the overall calculation that there will be new growth.
Thank you.
For additions and, and new houses being built.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Peter DeGillis again, and from the Elm Street area. I've been coming to this town since I was five years old with my parents and people, friends we had here. I mean, the Planning Department, it's got to understand that this is 2022, the country's expanding. Do you want Manchester to become, what I got in the mail, a sanctuary city? I got a letter in the mail from one of the senators. This is crazy. You've got to keep this town down. You can't build buildings 55 and 58 feet tall. This business of taking up the little postage stamp is Washington stuff. Find the right land. Why don't we have a committee that invites people out there to look and see what sites they're talking about? You can't imagine it unless you've seen it in person. I've done a lot of real estate in my life, too. I'm a doctor, but I've done a lot of real estate. You go see the location. You ask the people who are interested to come out and look and report back to the town members. That's how you do things in an honest way. You can't let one committee just draw the lines and say, "We're going to do this and this," like Beverly or Salem or other towns. We're not that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Lee Spence, 63 Pleasant Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spence. I'm going to try this, this is a two-thirds vote to call, to move the previous question. That's the motion to cut off debate. I'm going to try this by a voice vote, so that we don't have to create a slide and wait for that. If you're in favor, actually, let's do it with it. Let's do it with the cards. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with the pink card in it. Thank you. And if you're opposed to cutting off debate, I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. So we'll then go to a vote on the motion to approve the zoning amendment as stated in the article. And as I mentioned earlier, this is also a two-thirds vote under the Zoning Enabling Act, but we'll do it with the handsets. So we ready? If you're in favor of this amendment, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. If you abstain, press 3. And the voting period is open. And the motion is approved. By 253 votes to 31 against with four extensions. That's way more than two-thirds. I don't even need to do the math, but here it is on the screen. It's 88%. And we have, how many people? We have 294 people present, so that's well more than 90% counted. Article 11 is a vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 64G, Section 3A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax. And Jeff Bodmer Turner moves, and Rebecca Jakes seconds the article as printed in the warrant. The Finance Committee recommends approval, as does the Board of Selectmen. This is a simple majority vote under Chapter 64, Section 3A, and I'll recognize Jeff Bodmer
I'd like to keep this as brief as possible. The Board of Selectmen have introduced Article 11 as one of the efforts to collect revenue for our town budget that is not based in property taxes. Unlike the previous motion, which may yield large amounts of property tax, this will yield very little. It's a 3% excise on short-term rentals. This has been adopted by 212 communities in the state of Massachusetts. The range is 3.3% to 6% that's possible, and we're choosing to go at the low end of that range. A short-term rental under this proposal is the right to use, or at least, to use at least one furnished room, normally used for sleeping and living purposes for a period of not more than 31 consecutive calendar days. The definition also applies to bed and breakfast establishments, hotels, lodging houses, and motels. The question about whether the rental property has to be owner-occupied, no. The room may be in an owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or non-owner-occupied property. And the tax is collected typically through third parties, if the rental is being done that way, through Airbnb or another third-party property manager. The taxes go to the state along with the 5.7% state tax that already exists. The state collects all the taxes and quarterly reimburses the town for the 3% of those rentals. The Board would like to urge you to vote yes on this article. And I'm going to cut it off right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a discussion?
George Smith, Mascanoma Street. And do I understand the short, the definition of short term is 32 days? Or is it six days?
The definition in the state law is 31, not more than 31 consecutive days. Our local bylaw for registering a property for short-term rentals is up to six nights, but the state law prevails here in terms of collecting this tax.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in, this is a set of majority vote. If you're in favor of this motion, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. And if you want to abstain, press 3. Motion is approved by a vote of 217 to 28 with three extensions. Attendance is what? We have, do we have 292 people left? Two, I'm sorry, 253. 253. Okay, so that's, yeah, we've got 248 votes cast, so that we're still over 90%. Article 12, and Jeff Bodmer Turner moves, and Eli Bowling seconds the article as presented in the warrant. This would change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Finance Committee is taking no position. The Board of Selectmen recommend approval. This is a majority vote to amend the general bylaw. And I'll recognize Jeff Bodmer Turner for remarks. You did very well the last time keeping it short, Jeff.
I got two pages this time. What's in a name? There are those that would say that this proposal is just political correctness coming to our town. This proposal is just another attempt to wipe out the history of our town for the political expediency of gender-neutral language. I would agree, and in a vote of four to one, the Board of Selectmen disagrees that that's the case. The Board of Selectmen moved this article four to one. Language changes, even history changes. In 1645, when Jeffrey's Creek Incorporated within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the community changed the name to Manchester, Massachusetts. The governing body was named the Board of Selectmen because men who were in good standing in the church were elected by men to govern the town. As pointed out in a recent letter to the editor of The Cricket, quote, "Over the centuries, eligibility to serve as selectmen evolved," end quote, to include male property owners elected by men. 102 years ago, women successfully convinced men to amend the Constitution of the United States so that they could vote. They had no vote to elect those congresspeople. 65 years later, the town of Manchester elected a woman to the Board of Selectmen. Since 1985, we have had between one and three women on the Board of Selectmen. This name change proposal recognizes that history evolves. Language evolves, too. Among our various town boards and commissions, we have both men and women serve as leaders. Most of the leader of a board or commission is referred to as a chair rather than as a chairman. This did not happen by vote of town meeting or a special act of the legislature, which was required when residents voted in 1989 to become Manchester by the Sea. The change to using chair to designate a leader of a committee came out of our use of language. The more people use it, the more it becomes the norm. Language changes. This proposal to rename the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, made up of Select Board members, as I said, was put forth by a current board with a four to one vote. It comes before town meeting because our bylaws have language, the language Board of Selectmen throughout, to refer to the town's policymaking body. The majority of the Board of Selectmen see this as a time to update the name to Select Board and Select Board Member to recognize that history has changed the role of women in our government and that the change in language recognizes the significant contributions that women have made to our governing board since 1985. I hope you'll join the majority of the Board of Selectmen to honor women and to support the change with a yes vote.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there discussion? Excuse me. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Ann Harrison, Tuxpoint, 13 Tuxpoint Road. I have the honor and privilege of serving as a selectman in Manchester. And I was the opposition vote. Manchester has had, since 1985, Manchester has had nine women on the Board of Selectmen. They've served for a total of 67 years under the name of selectmen. And I honor their service. I, and I am, ask you not to abandon history. History doesn't change. And their, the title of Board of Selectmen has been, the, the composition of the Board of Selectmen can change without changing the name of the board. Just because every other, many other towns are doing it doesn't mean that Manchester needs to abandon our traditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Further discussion? Yes?
I appreciate this change.
I'm, I'm sorry. Would you give us your name and address?
Nellie Bowling of 99 Pleasant Street. I appreciate this change, or this proposed change on many levels. For one, I think that, while we should acknowledge our history, and I appreciate that, I agree that history, or history remains the same, but we must evolve and we must continue to change and grow. I think that this new name would not only still respect this really important role in our local government, but it would also continue to invite people who might not even identify as man or woman. And I think that it is inclusive to everybody in our community, not just to those in the binary. I believe that this would be a really positive change and it would just be a direct way of letting people know that regardless of who they are, not only do they have a voice in the government in terms of their vote, they could run and become a voice for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. Yes, in the, in the back, please? Yes. Yes.
Sue Thorne, 9 Sawmill...
I think that mic isn't on, Sue.
I'm not supposed to touch it.
Take your life in your hands.
I know. Sue Thorne, 9 Sawmill Circle. I was a selectman here in Manchester for 10 years. Currently, we have two women serving as selectmen, Ann Harrison and Becky Jakes. In recent years, Muffin Driscoll and Sue Beckman served this town as selectmen. Before them, Mary Hardwick served 14 years as a selectman. And early on, Don Gross, Polly Townsend, and Sue Noble, all women and all serving this town as selectmen. All of us chose to run for election as selectmen. We were honored to have the vote of confidence from our community. We all provided leadership with pride and dedication. And I don't for one minute believe that any one of us ever gave a moment's thought to being called a selectman. Going forward, are we to research, to refer to ourselves as select people having served on a select board? I can't think of anything that sounds more elitist than that. I will always refer to my service as having been a selectman, serving on a board of selectmen. I can't believe that we're actually spending town meeting time on this issue when there are many more pressing concerns and challenges before us. I do not support this article, and I urge you here tonight also not to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thorne. Yes, sir.
Don Schwartz, Ocean Street. The recent speaker and Ann Harrison before her said it all perfectly. I haven't been thinking about this, so I don't have thoughts neatly organized. But have you ever heard the expression, "Hey, guys"? Ever seen a whole bunch of little girls saying, "Hey, guys"? It's been around a long time, a good decade. Nobody says something sick or wrong with that. This is getting creepy. Absolutely creepy. It's ridiculous. You're not going to have to pass a law that says girls can't say, "Hey, guys," because it's insulting to them. As the recent speaker and Ann Harrison pointed out, there is no female and no woman with her head connected correctly who's ever been worried or bothered by being called selectmen. As a matter of fact, just like "Hey, guys," it might even be honorable. It's getting creepy, ridiculous. Vote against this thing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Starkey?
My name is Jim Starkey, 13 Tuxpoint Road. This is more than a name change. This is changing the way we think about our primary board. Historically, the board is member, are selectmen. They are selected individuals who get together who worry about the day-to-day problems that our town faces. Changing it to a select board is completely different. That means the board is select, the people are not. It just changes the way we think about our, our government. I think our Board of Selectmen has served us well over the years. And I don't think changing the way we think about it is, makes any sense at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey. The lady in the back, is that Laura Tenney?
Yes, thank you. Laura Tenney, 86 Pine Street. As a member of your local government and the planning board, I didn't intend to get up here and talk on this issue tonight. This is important. Language has a deeper meaning. So when we say, and I give honor to all of the women who have served on the selectmen's board, refer to yourself with honor as selectman. I, I honor and I respect that. Going forward, I want the Select Board to be something that all of us can aspire to. I don't want to be told by a man, with all due respect, that this is creepy or silly or doesn't matter. It matters. I'm a woman, I have a daughter. I want my daughter to aspire to serve for government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tenney. Further discussion? Yes?
Isabella Bates, 2 Mascanomo Street. I was a member of the Episcopal Church in the 70s when there was a great deal of discussion about God the Father. And people objected strenuously to the idea that we should change that name. It did not include 50% of the people in the room. And over time, the language has shifted. I do believe that language that says "select men" is and was historically about men. And I totally respect the women on the board who have spoken tonight. But I think going forward, it is behooving to us to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes? Ms. Cabot?
Carol Cabot, 1 Tuxpoint Road. I know that when the town of Manchester changed its name to Manchester by the Sea, there was a lot of expense involved for individual businesses who had to change their registrations and their stationery and such things. I wondered if there are any implications in changing the Board of Selectmen and how extensive that would be.
Mr. Bodmer Turner?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that question up.
Would you stand, please, Jeff? Thank you.
He's giving it to me for going over time. Thank you for bringing that question up. Unlike the change to Manchester by the Sea, which letterheads and stationery had to be changed for individual businesses, this is not going to have much of an effect at all on individual businesses. It will mean that we are making, by this vote, changes in our bylaws to substitute language that says Board of Selectmen with Select Board and language that says "select man" or "select men" to Select Board Members or Select Board Member. That's all. That's the change. So it would just be a change within the bylaws themselves that we're voting on tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Excuse me. Further discussion? I don't see any hands up, so I think we're, the meeting is ready to vote. If you're in favor of changing the name of, from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. And if you want to abstain, press 3. Voting is open. And the motion prevails, but, excuse me, by a vote of 116 to 83 with six extensions. We have 205 people in attendance, so we're still over 90%. Happy to say that. Article 13 is a placeholder in case we changed or increased line items in any of the money articles. We didn't. And so Jeff Bodmer Turner moves, and Sarah Melish second to pass over Article 13. If you're in favor of passing over Article 13, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote, I so declare it. And Jeff Bodmer Turner moves, and Sarah, and Becky Jakes second to dissolve the annual town meeting. And if you're in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare this annual town meeting dissolved.